Let's call this meeting to order. Ellen? We have been in closed session since 5:30 for the purpose of employment of employee, student discipline, and negotiations. Mr. Bloom?
Here.
Mrs. Stufen?
Here.
Dr. Harrell?
Here.
Mrs. Bostido?
Here.
Mr. McDonough?
Here.
Mr. Collins is absent. Mrs. Ebner?
Here. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have three student recognitions tonight. I'll start with the first.
I'd like to invite up Ken Ross. Ken is going to be representing the IDE State Competition Champions and Skills USA State Competition. Ken is here every year, and his students are always getting awards and recognition. So, I know it's springtime when Ken is here, and congratulations, Ken, once again.
Technology. I love it. Thank you, Dr. Purno, for introducing me. I'm also here with Ron Roback and Joe Stoles. If you want to come up, our other instructors in industrial technology. And then if I could have Alex, and Alex, come on up. Yeah, Mr. Roback, the second gentleman, he's our auto technology instructor, and Joe Stoles is our graphics communications instructor. So, we all have matching shirts, very cool. You guys are over there in the middle. It's not about us, it's about you. I have a little thing I've written down here that I'd like to go over real quick. I'd like to thank the school board and Superintendent Purno for giving us the opportunity to honor these students this evening, and for supporting industrial technology at York High School. Really also want to thank Ms. Smith, Diana Smith, and her administration for their positive support of our students and the industrial technology programs at York. It's the day-to-day things that you don't see at York when we come to events like this. And the support that we get at the high school throughout the year makes this very possible for us to compete with our students in April, and that gives us an opportunity to come here. So, thank you very much. First thing I'd like to do is congratulate Alec Hein and Alex Taze. Alec Hein placed third, he's on your right, in the white shirt, in Machine CAD. And then Alex Taze placed third in Intro to CAD at the State Illinois Drafting Education Association, or IDEA. In this particular competition, it's the drafting educators that promote the field of drafting by working closely with schools and private industries, so that prepares our students in CAD for when they graduate, and gives them the best possible chance to be successful. And in order to go to state, you have to take a regional competition, and they did that late in March, I hope. And so you have to go to COD, they compete, and if you take high enough there, then they invite you downstate. And then they competed at ISU, and they, as I said, they both placed third. So, congratulations to both of these young men.
I'm going to read the proclamation. I just wanted to say one thing, drafting and designing is one of those fields that there are more job openings than applicants, so you can get a job in this field, which is great. So, the proclamation reads, "Whereas the Illinois Drafting Educators Association Awards Program is recognized throughout the state as a prestigious student recognition program in industrial arts education, specifically advancing the drafting occupation through better education. And whereas this program encourages excellence on the part of individual students and also encourages them to pursue careers in drafting-related fields. And whereas in April, at the state finals at Illinois State University's Turner Hall, the following York Community High School students received medals. Alec Hein placed third in machine computer aided drafting, and Alexander Taze placed third in introduction to computer aided drafting. And whereas this accomplishment brings pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and to the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit District 205 express congratulations to these students, their parents, and their teachers, from the Industrial Technology Department, Ken Ross, Dan Kalenberg, Rob Roback, and Joe Stoles, for this outstanding accomplishment." Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys, on a great accomplishment. I'll read the proclamation here. "Whereas the Skills USA competition is acknowledged as a prestigious student recognition program in industrial arts education, which provides quality educational experiences for students in leadership, teamwork, citizenship, and character development, in addition to promoting community service. And whereas this program encourages excellence on the part of individual students and encourages schools to establish industry standards for job skill training in the classroom. And whereas the following York Community High School students earned medals in April in Springfield. Alec Hein, first in technical drafting CAD; Hannah Kopac, third in Adobe Photoshop; Chase Peterson, first in collision repair technologies; and Christopher Taylor, third in automotive service technology. And whereas Chase Peterson and Alec Hein will be competing at the 48th Annual National Leadership and Skills Conference in Kansas City, Missouri, in June of 2013. And whereas these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and to the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to these students, their parents, and their teachers, from the Industrial Technology Department, Ken Ross, Dan Kalenberg, Rob Roback, and Joe Stoles, and for this outstanding accomplishment. Congratulations."
Okay, we have one more recognition. Amen, amen. The FCCLA, Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. Thanks.
It's my pleasure to introduce Wendy Albert. And if you don't know this, Wendy is the manager and owner of one of the best restaurants in the area, La Brigade, and she's graced us this evening to give medalists for the competition. Wendy?
Thank you. FCCLA students, if you guys could come forward, and you're going to kind of form a much bigger line here in front of the tables facing the camera. So, go ahead and come on up. All right, so good evening. My name is Wendy Albert. I'm the department chair for Family and Consumer Sciences at York High School. I'm also one of the advisors for Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, or FCCLA. I'd like to thank Superintendent Purno and the school board for recognizing the accomplishments of our FCCLA state competitors again this year. Each year, I typically start off by telling a little bit about our organization. I describe the different events that the students have competed in. They're all in Family and Consumer Science classes, so it's anything from interior design to culinary arts to sewing to career image, job interview. This year, I'm going to change things up a little bit, though. I encourage you to check out our website, find out a little bit more about FCCLA, talk to the students about the events that they competed in. This year, I wanted to change things up a little bit and tell you about the FCCLA state competition trip that almost never happened. When I think back on the competition this year, the phrase "come hell or high water" is the first thing that pops into my mind. And no, I'm not being overly dramatic, at least not about the high water part, because we were scheduled to depart from Elmhurst on the morning that much of the community woke up underwater. I'm sure you can imagine that most high school students, how they reacted when they found out the school was canceled on that fateful Thursday morning. Our students, however, the FCCLA students, probably had a little bit different reaction, more of panic, and, "Oh, my gosh, what's going to happen with our state FCCLA trip?" After assessing the weather conditions and the road conditions, we had to make the unfortunate call that at least for the meantime, the trip was canceled, until we could figure something else out. As that decision was being made, however, plans were in the works to try and figure out how we could possibly get all of these students who had worked so hard to prepare for their events down to Springfield safely. This year's trip really would not have been possible without a number of people who are working hard behind the scenes on that. I'd like to thank Diana Smith, who was instrumental in advocating for delayed competitions and late arrival for schools with our state and national organization. I'd like to thank Marta Lockwood and the Illinois FCCLA Board of Directors who've made provisions allowing schools to arrive and register late, moving competitions from Thursday to Friday, and allowing students to compete as they arrived, even if they had missed their assigned competition time. I'd also like to thank the FCCLA advisors, Sabrina Benjamin, Ashley Agley, Lindsay Goldsmith, Sarah Merrick, and Rachel Martin, who helped all day long on their rain day, making phone calls, sending emails, and ensuring that students had the most up-to-date information about the trip. Most of all, though, I'd like to thank the students that are before you. Put yourself in their shoes. They've been preparing for the last three to four months, and they wake up to find out that their trip is off. Then, a few hours later in the day, once we've reorganized things, they find out the trip is back on, but it looks very different. Most significantly, they had to arrive at school by 5:45 on Friday morning. Parents, we want to make sure to thank you for helping to ensure that they were there on time. The easy thing to do would have been simply not to go. But to show you how dedicated these students are, every single student who was scheduled to compete in Springfield was at school on time on Friday morning. They had all of their equipment and everything they needed loaded onto the bus, and not to toot our own horn or anything, but we were pulling away from York ahead of schedule. Students, all of your teachers are very proud of your accomplishments in the FCS classroom, as well as in FCCLA. We thank you for your dedication and enthusiasm and hard work. We really enjoy working with you, and we truly enjoy sharing in your success. And now we'll hear from a member of the school board who's going to read your medal announcements and a proclamation.
Thank you, Wendy. So, the proclamation, "Whereas the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, FCCLA, state competition award program is acknowledged throughout the nation as a prestigious student recognition program in family and consumer sciences-related education. And whereas this program encourages excellence on the part of individual students and encourages them to pursue careers requiring specific related skills. And whereas the following York Community High School students earn top positions in the state competition in the following categories. Apparel construction, gold most outstanding, Gabriela Gregario." I'm going to slaughter some names, and I apologize upfront. How's that? Silver, Anna Benzen, Colette Obermeyer, Caitlin Wickersham, and Dylan Williams Rutz. And bronze, Angela Gomez and Callie Starr. Cake decorating, silver, Carly Ralston, Connor Walter, and Crystal Wallach. Children's literature presentation, gold most outstanding, Sidney Dider, Elizabeth Larson, Ariana Kakatos, Elizabeth Shaki. And Caitlin McNally, Kelsey Mills. Gold, Alejandra Hernandez, Jessica Steja. Cookie decorating, gold, Samantha Heiburger. Culinary arts, bronze, Eric Hoff, Matthew Arnery, and Matthew Reher. Fashion design, silver, Tanashi Tate. Interior design, gold most outstanding, Daryl Barnes, and Cassia Cortopassi, and DC Canoe. Kaylee Schwartz. Job interview, silver, Ranjitha James. Preschool lesson plan, silver, Janita Jomee, Hina Mohaben. Professional career image, silver, Christina Agliata. Relish tray, gold, Garrett Stevenson. And whereas, Daryl Barnes, and Cassia Cortopassi, and Dicey? Canoe, and Kaylee Schwartz, interior design teams, have qualified to compete at the national competition in Nashville, Tennessee, in July. And Eric Hoff, culinary art division, has been chosen as one of the six top culinary art students in the state, qualifying him as a Nationals Training Team member. And whereas these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and to the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to these students, their parents, and the faculty of the Family and Consumer Sciences Department, Wendy Albert, Sabrina Benjamin, Ashley Edgley, Lindsay Goldsmith, Sarah Merrick, Rachel Martin, and Joelle Sofker, for their outstanding achievements. Congratulations to all of you.
Right. We'll take a quick 30-second break. I've forgotten timing it. Oh, no, I lost my... Okay. I don't have any here, but I just wanted to make sure that we're not missing anything, verbal or written comments? Okay, seeing none? We'll move on to superintendent's communication.
Yes, this evening, we would like to do a presentation from Corporate Benefit Consultants on insurance renewal presentation. Chris Welton will be doing that this evening.
We have Rhonda Sanders from Corporate Benefit Consultants, and Ted Reese here, also from Corporate Benefit Consultants, to do the presentation of the insurance renewal for 2013-14.
Good evening. Is that better? There you go. Okay, good evening. We'd like to review with you this evening the renewal projections that we have presented to Chris for the 2013-2014 plan year, and we'll start with... Oh, did I? Got it, thank you. We're going to talk about a couple of things in addition to the renewal. There are two new Affordable Care Act fees that the district is responsible for paying in 2014, which is part of the renewal. So, we'll talk about that, and then we'll also look at some of the changes that we have recommended for the 2013-2014 plan year. The first fee that we'd like to introduce under the Affordable Care Act is called the Patient Centered for Outcome Research Institute, or PCORI, as we refer to it. And this fee is a fee that will start in 2014, and it is expected to end in 2019. This fee is actually provided to fund research that will evaluate and compare health outcomes, clinical effectiveness, risks, and benefits of medical treatment and services for not only members, people like us, but also providers and healthcare professionals across the country. And this is really to help research to make better informed decisions about treatment options that are available in the medical arena. The first fee is due in July of 2014 for your group, and the fee for this is, for the first year, $1 per covered member, not just employee, but for every employee, dependent, including spouses and children, that you cover under your plan. In year two, that fee increases to $2 per covered member, and then in subsequent years, that fee will increase based on the percentage increase for the projected medical inflation, and it is expected to end in 2019. We'll show you what those estimated fees are for the district in future exhibits when we look at the renewal, because it does take effect with the renewal projections. The second fee is a much larger fee, and this fee is only anticipated to last for three years. It's called the Transitional Reinsurance Fee. And this fee will be used basically to spread the financial risk across all of the health insurers, like Blue Cross, Cigna, United Healthcare, all of the carriers today that are in our marketplace that will be participating in the future healthcare exchanges. This fee is to help spread the risk for those carriers that will be participating in those exchanges, and that will be covering new people that are eligible under the exchanges that are unable to get insurance today. All employers across the nation are responsible for paying this fee. It's not, there's no one that's specifically excluded for this fee. The collection for this fee begins in 2014 as well, and it's subject to your per policy. So, if you have a PPO plan, an HMO plan, an HSA plan, it is applicable to each of those plans per policy year. It is an annual fee that is assessed, and for the first year, it's $63 per covered life, just like the PCORI. And this fee will be billed by Blue Cross Blue Shield to the district. They'll collect the fee, and they'll remit that fee directly on your behalf. And again, this fee is to be assessed for the next three years, and as you can see in the exhibit, what they need to collect over this three-year period is $25 billion. So, we're hoping that if they collect what they need in the first year, which is $12 billion, that that $63 will decrease. And again, it is estimated to last for a three-year period. Okay, for the PPO plans, today, your district offers two PPO plans, PPO1, PPO2. And for this year, there will be no rate increases to either of those PPO plans. PPO2, however, will be eliminated as of January 1st, 2014, and that plan will be replaced with a consumer-driven health plan that will include a health savings account. And that will be as of July, or, excuse me, January 1st. Rates for that plan are approximately 18% lower than your PPO1 plan, which is where the majority of your membership currently...
Right. We'll take a quick 30-second break. I've forgotten timing it. Oh, no, I lost my... Okay. Are there any public comments? I don't have any here, but I just wanted to make sure that we're not missing anything. Verbal or written comments? Okay, seeing none? We'll move on to superintendent's communication.
Yes, this evening, we would like to do a presentation on, from Corporate Benefit Consultants on Insurance Renewal presentation. Chris Welton will be doing that this evening.
We have Rhonda Sanders from Corporate Benefit Consultants and Ted Reese here, also from Corporate Benefit Consultants, to do the presentation of the insurance renewal for 2013-14.
Good evening. Is that better? There you go. Okay, good evening. We'd like to review with you this evening the renewal projections that we have presented to Chris for the 2013-2014 plan year. And we'll start with... Oh, did I? Got it, thank you. We're going to talk about a couple of things in addition to the renewal. There are two new Affordable Care Act fees that the district is responsible for paying in 2014, which is part of the renewal. So we'll talk about that, and then we'll also look at some of the changes that we have recommended for the 2013-2014 plan year. The first fee that we'd like to introduce for, under the Affordable Care Act, is called the Patient Centered for Outcome Research Institute, or PCORI, as we refer to it. And this fee is a fee that will start in 2014, and it is expected to end in 2019. This fee is actually provided to fund research that will evaluate and compare health outcomes, clinical effectiveness, risks and benefits of medical treatment and services for not only members, people like us, but also providers and healthcare professionals across the country. And this is really to help research to make better informed decisions about treatment options that are available in the medical arena. The first fee is due in July of 2014 for your group, and the fee for this is, for the first year, $1 per covered member, not just employee, but for every employee, dependent, including spouses and children, that you cover under your plan. In year two, that fee increases to $2 per covered member, and then in subsequent years, that fee will increase based on the percentage increase for the projected medical inflation, and it is expected to end in 2019. We'll show you what those estimated fees are for the district in future exhibits when we look at the renewal, because it does take effect with the renewal projections. The second fee is a much larger fee, and this fee is only anticipated to last for three years. It's called the Transitional Reinsurance Fee. And this fee will be used basically to spread the financial risk across all of the health insurers, like Blue Cross, Cigna, United Healthcare, all of the carriers today that are in our marketplace that will be participating in the future healthcare exchanges. This fee is to help spread the risk for those carriers that will be participating in those exchanges, and that will be covering new people that are eligible under the exchanges that are unable to get insurance today. All employers across the nation are responsible for paying this fee. It's not, there's no one that's specifically excluded for this fee. The collection for this fee begins in 2014 as well, and it's subject to your per policy. So if you have a PPO plan, an HMO plan, an HSA plan, it is applicable to each of those plans per policy year. It is an annual fee that is assessed, and for the first year, it's $63 per covered life, just like the PCORI. And this fee will be billed by Blue Cross Blue Shield to the district. They'll collect the fee, and they'll remit that fee directly on your behalf. And again, this fee is to be assessed for the next three years, and as you can see in the exhibit, what they need to collect over this three-year period is $25 billion. So we're hoping that if they collect what they need in the first year, which is $12 billion, that that $63 will decrease. And again, it is estimated to last for a three-year period. Okay, for the PPO plans, today, your district offers two PPO plans, PPO 1, PPO 2. And for this year, there will be no rate increases to either of those PPO plans. PPO 2, however, will be eliminated as of January 1st, 2014, and that plan will be replaced with a consumer-driven health plan that will include a health savings account. And that will be as of July, or, excuse me, January 1st. Rates for that plan are approximately 18% lower than your PPO 1 plan, which is where the majority of your membership currently have the membership in. So with this, over the last year, we've been with the committee members, talking to them about what we want to do with the HSA and PPO 2. We did hold a membership vote, and with that vote, 77% voted to eliminate PPO 2 and replace it with the HSA, and 22.6% voted to keep the PPO 2 in place. So there was an overwhelming decision to replace PPO 2 with the health savings account. The projected annual PPO cost for 2013 is $8,446,306. This does not include your Affordable Care Act fees that we just, that I just talked about. Those fees are estimated to be close to $90,000 or 1% of your fixed cost. And that's based on 1,399 people that are covered under both of the PPO plans today, employees, spouses, and dependents. The fixed cost in your PPO estimates this year represent about 9.4% of your overall cost, or $887,000, which include the Affordable Care Act fees. We have recommended this year to increase the individual stop-loss level. Today, the district is responsible for the first $150,000 for every covered individual in claims. Everything above that is then reimbursed by Blue Cross Blue Shield, and you pay a premium for that. So this year, we've recommended that the district take another $10,000 in additional liability. Blue Cross actually asked for almost a 19% increase in that particular coverage, which was almost $94,000 in premium. We actually went out to market to outside reinsurance carriers and secured a quote from a carrier that works specifically with Blue Cross Blue Shield, and they offered a proposal at the $160,000 level that was much lower than your renewal. And so for the $10,000 in additional liability, you're saving $94,000. So we're recommending that you make that move. It's very seamless to the employees. It's just basically a funding mechanism, and the employees are not impacted by that change at all. Yes?
Just while we're on this, how many claims hit the cap last year?
I'm sorry?
Do you know how many claims hit the cap last year?
You had one claim.
So we're taking $10,000, in that case, we would have taken additional $10,000 of expense and saved $94,000.
That's correct.
All right.
And we actually did a five-year analysis, and over the, actually, three-year analysis, and over the three-year analysis, you would have won every single year had you taken that higher level. And your fixed cost components actually include your admin costs that you pay Blue Cross Blue Shield to administer your claims. It includes the prescription drug rebates that you get back from Blue Cross. It includes your individual stop-loss, and then all of the Affordable Care Act fees that we had to project for this year. This next exhibit will just outline for you the cost of your fixed cost under the PPO, the total Affordable Care Act fees, based on the almost 1,400 lives, and the total projected claims, which are your medical and prescription at $7.6 million, for a total combined of 8.535841. If we use your premium equivalent rates that you have set today, you're at 8.5. I'm going to round up. So you're looking at a premium differential of almost $70,000, which is less than 1% overall. And so our recommendation was to leave the PPO rates the same this year, even with the Affordable Care Act, which is a very good story. I mean, I think last year, we also had the same scenario. So over the last two years, your plan has run very well in the PPO. You've run below trends, which has been a successful story, even with the Affordable Care Act. Next year, we hope to have the same story, but we would expect that as years go on, going through 2014 and beyond, we'll probably see a little bit more increases, especially with the Affordable Care Act and the taxes that are involved. It represents anywhere from 1% to 2% of your total cost. So if you have no increases, but you have to add those fees, you're going to see at least a 1% to 2% bump in those costs for those, to cover those taxes. The next exhibit just gives you an example of what the rates are today and the exposures that you have. I mentioned earlier that the PPO 2 plan will be eliminated in January of 2014. You have 28 employees that are covered under that plan today. They will be able to enroll in the PPO 2 or stay in that plan from July through December of this year. And then in January of 2014, we'll be rolling out another special enrollment period for everyone in the district to be able to re-enroll into a new plan. So that will give them the opportunity to enroll into the HSA plan as well. This is a sample of what the Health Savings Account Plan rates will look like, and as I mentioned earlier, there is approximately about an 18% differential in the premium equivalent rates between your PPO 1 plan and the HSA plan. So that's a significant reduction in rates and contributions based on the percentage of the premium. The dental cost this year actually increased a little bit, but still lower than trend. Last year, we didn't make a rate adjustment, but we did adjust the family rate or the dependent rate based on the actuary valuation that we looked at, with no rate increase. This year, with your claims and administration, the estimated costs are at $800,000, and this represents about a $28,000 increase in your premium equivalent, or 3.6%. Here is an outline of what those costs look like. Your fixed cost in your actual claims compared to your premium equivalent gives us about a premium differential of $29,000. The HMO this year was a little bit more challenging to us as it was last year. The HMO claims actually increased significantly in this last period compared to the prior year, and certainly something we didn't expect. We had a couple of high-dollar claims that were in this experience period, and we just look at this as sort of a one-time analysis, and hopefully, these claims will go away and not reoccur. And so we looked at several options for the district. The first option was to make no plan changes at all to the existing HMO plans. And what that meant to the district was approximately a 15% rate increase, which is a very large rate increase. That would have been about $390,000 in additional premium. Total cost came in at 2.889. That's no plan changes, just looking at your trend, including your Affordable Care Act fees, which were much lower in the HMO, but they're still part of the projection. Option 2 was to look at some plan changes for both the HMO Illinois and the Blue Advantage HMO. And by implementing those plan changes, it reduced the 15% increase to 11% and actually saved about $115,000 in cost to go to option 2 with some plan changes. The estimated annual charges with the plan changes come in at $2,774. The Affordable Care Act fees under the HMO represent about 1.4% of your overall cost. Based on the membership voting that we had with the committee and through the membership, 31, almost 32% voted for option 1, and 68% voted to move for option 2, which was to implement the plan changes and take the lower rate increase of 11%. This next screen represents the changes that will be implemented as of July 1st. So you can basically, anything noted in red will outline the changes. So you have increases in your office visit co-pays, your specialist co-pays, your inpatient deductible, and your retail pharmacy on the second and third tiers for both HMO Illinois and Blue Advantage HMO. And these changes will be effective 7/1. The next screen outlines, again, the same thing. The annual fixed cost, your Affordable Care Act fees, and the projected claims for both medical and prescription compared to your premium equivalent, which is 2.5. So we're looking at a $390,000 differential with your plan changes of 115, takes us down to $2,774, or 11% rate increase compared to your current premium equivalent. Last year, I'd like to mention that we did move you, your funding arrangement from a fully insured to a cost-plus or self-funded. That has done well for you this year. Had you remained fully insured, you would have seen a much larger increase than the 15 or 11%. Under the fully insured arrangement, there's another fee called the health insurer fee, which is equal to 2.3% of your premium if you're fully insured. So if you're looking at a $2.8 million number, you add 2.3% to that number under a fully insured, on top of trend, on top of your increase in claims, it would have been a much bigger number, more like 20%. The next exhibit just shows what those rates look like under both the HMO Illinois and the Blue Advantage, and the exposures that you have under each plan. And then moving forward, we had certain goals. I think the biggest goal that we accomplished this year compared to last year was putting in the HSA, educating the insurance committee members, et cetera, about placing, replacing the PPO 2 plan. So that will be done January 1st. Over the fall, we will be educating all of the members. We will be holding educational meetings, seminars, things of that nature, lunch and learns with the membership in August through November to help teach people about the HSA option, so that by the time they make their decision at the next open enrollment, which will be in November, they'll have hopefully enough information to make an educated decision about the HSA. We will be putting in the plan changes for the HMO. We're going to have two open enrollments this year. The first one is going on right now for May, and then the second one will be a special open enrollment this year only, which will be in the fall, that will allow everyone to make another change for January 1st, and that will coincide with all of the deductibles and the HSA account. So everyone will have an option twice this year to make a decision on what plan they want. And then moving forward after 2014, all future open enrollments will be held in the fall for a 1-1 election period. And the next thing that we want to look at for this next year is with the committee, is exploring the opportunity and possibility of carving out the prescription drug card from Blue Cross Blue Shield. That was one of our goals for this last year, but we had a lot of time to keep on the HSA. So this next year, we're going to do that analysis. It's very complex, because moving drug vendors, you have disruption with formulary, non-formulary drugs. So it's not a matter of just looking at, can we make this change? We have to see how many people that impacts, whether or not the savings to make a move would warrant a change, just based on the disruption itself. So those are things we'll be looking at moving forward. Any questions? Yes?
Could you explain a little more in depth than my simple Google search revealed about what a consumer-driven health plan is?
Absolutely.
And how is that qualitatively different from?
Sure. The consumer-driven health plan is basically a PPO plan with a high deductible. So it has a $2,500 deductible. It also has a health savings account attached to it, where your members can put in pre-tax dollars, similar to an FSA, flexible spending account, that they can use to cover expenses beyond the, before the first $2,500 of expenses. So today, you have a $400 deductible and a $1,000 out-of-pocket. Let's call it 1,400 bucks. After that, your plan pays 100%. Under an HSA, they can go in or out of network, but the member is responsible for the first $2,500. There's no RX co-pays, you know, routine services are covered at 100%, no cost sharing. However, this gives them the opportunity to put money aside and save money. They can take that money with them if they leave the district. It's their money. They can use that for future retirement, to pay future medical health expenses, dental expenses, and it gives them an opportunity to save money. So typically, you'll see the participation in those plans for young families or young individuals that are coming into your district that, you know, are, they probably don't go to the doctor all the time, they just go for routine if that at all, but it gives them an opportunity to save. And it does save the district money, because your rates are significantly lower, and you have more out-of-pocket expenses by the member first. So there's advantages in both scenarios. You're welcome.
I just have one.
Yes.
So with the scenarios in the slides, we, the district is absorbing the Affordable Care Act, the fees? You are absorbing that?
It's, we've included that in the total premium equivalent rate. So for example, it's in the projection for the renewal, so the contribution by the member is based on a percentage of that total premium. So it is a fee that's in the, in the projections, and it's also part of the contribution that the member will share. So it's going to be shared by both the member and the district. Yes?
I'm sorry, one more question. You had option 1 and 2, and then you showed the result of the vote.
Yes.
Of the insurance committee.
Yes.
Is there action of the board that needs to be done to implement that, or is that automatic with the vote?
Well, Chris?
The board is taking action later in the agenda today to approve the renewal, which includes these items.
That's okay. Any other questions?
I do.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify, with the Affordable Care Act, what you, did I understand it right, that the first year, you were able to get another carrier, so that we can absorb the additional costs that, that we would incur for the Affordable Care Act?
But what we were able to...
And then previous year, the subsequent years, it's like 1% and 2% conservatively. Is that true?
Well, what we did this year on the PPO side is we were able to go out and secure an outside stop-loss carrier that was more competitive than Blue Cross Blue Shield. It saved the district about $94,000 to take that outside reinsurance coverage. What you did save is on the HMO side. Last year, you were fully insured. We moved you to a cost-plus arrangement with Blue Cross. So we just basically changed the funding arrangement from a fully insured to a self-funded. One of the fees that we did not talk about today is if you're fully insured, there's a fee called the health insurer fee, which is another Affordable Care Act tax, and that's equal to 2.3% of your fully insured premium. So if you were fully insured, let's say the number was 2.8, you'd have to add 2.3% to that number, had you remained fully insured this past year. So we saved you in that aspect, and the fact that by moving the reinsurance, it sort of offset the, a portion of the Affordable Care Act fees, which is about $130,000 for both plans combined, HMO and PPO. So of that 130, we were able to save the district 94 on that reinsurance part. But it still does make a difference in the overall component. Next year, the fee for PCORI goes up $1, and we're hoping that the transitional fee will be lower than the $63. We expect that it either stay the same. Hopefully, it won't go up. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to project, right? We're looking at a, you know, structural budget issue.
Yes.
And so it's okay, we've got the, another fee.
Yes.
That we will be incurring on behalf of our employees.
Two new fees.
Which everyone will be.
Two new fees, yes.
Correct. And so, you know, what does that do to our budget?
Right.
And budgeting and actuals.
Rhonda, you pointed out earlier that the retention, that our overall fixed costs were 9.8%.
9.4.
Could you comment on the government's standards for group size and how they fare?
Sure. What Ted's referring to is, under the Affordable Care Act, you have to maintain a level of an 80% minimum loss ratio, which basically means if your retention is more than 20% or your fixed cost, if that goes above that number, then there are also penalties.
For large groups, I think it's 15.
It's 15 for the large groups. So in your case, you're way below the, the industry of where the Affordable Care Act has set that number, which was 15% for large groups. So under an insured case, it's, it's 20%. So you have actually done well by moving your funding arrangement on the HMO, and you're well below the government level of 15% on your PPO.
Karen, that, those fees were budgeted, just to clarify.
Yes. Yes.
Do you think those fees will go away in 2019?
Is that rhetorical?
We hope that... We hope that they will. It's, it's to be determined. I think after next year, after 2014, when we see how much has actually been collected, we'll have a better idea. But we hope that they will go away.
I think I missed something because it sounds like the HSA is beneficial to the members, but their out-of-pocket is up?
So their out-of-pocket is up, yes. Today, your plan under the PPO pays a $1,400 out-of-pocket. Then your plan goes into 100% excluding copayments, like your prescription drug card. So with an HSA, they're responsible for the first dollar of everything, excluding routine services. Because under Affordable Care Act, that has to be covered by the district at 100%, no cost share. So the worst-case scenario for a person under the HSA is $2,500 versus 1,400. But when we did an analysis of your actual membership and the out-of-pocket that people have incurred, it's very low, very low. So in some cases, when we look at examples, would everybody have a $14,000 charge every year? Probably not. Everyone will be different with their services and their charges. And the idea and the concept is to educate them on the savings part of it. And it helps them become better consumers. Do I really need to run to the emergency room? Can I wait till the next day? And that's a process that really needs to take place. That's why we wanted to introduce it January 1st and give us a couple of months to do these meetings with membership because we have examples for them. We have worksheets they can use to determine what will my out-of-pocket expense be? And what does this mean to my paycheck when I have to put pre-tax dollars aside? Many, many members don't understand that, that it's very, it's more advantageous for them to do it that way than to pay for services on a post-tax basis. So it requires a lot of education and that's what we're hoping to do from August through November. So not everybody will have $2,500 in expenses. You have a very small population that actually met the full $1,400. The majority of your people are below the $1,400. So, you know, that says something right there on the PPO.
So you said that that money is theirs to take with them, but that has to be used on healthcare expenses? Is that right?
That's correct. Healthcare expenses only. And then future in retirement, they can use it for long-term care insurance. They can use it towards premium, Medicare premiums. So it's something that they have to look at long-term. And it's money that they're, it's theirs to take wherever they go. Leaving the district to go to another district or somewhere else, that's their, that's their money.
I understand that the PPO two is going away. Okay, so obviously they'll have to make some changes. Is there any estimate on how many people might switch toward this HSA?
That's a great question. We have several large districts like yours that has introduced HSAs. And the process is about a three-year process before we see really good penetration into the HSA. The first year, I would say, we anticipate, and this is going to sound like a very low number, probably anywhere from 36 to 40 employees. It seems very low, but a lot of people don't want to be the first to try it. And so if you have people that understand their services, that know what they're doing, that get the math, they'll participate and they'll save. And then we'll see it grow from there. A lot of it is just really the education and getting people to understand the mathematics behind it and to change the behavior that I need to start thinking about what I, where I need to go, when I need to go, and how much money I need to spend with that first $2,500. So not, it's not for everybody, but I think over a three-to-four-year period, you'll see participation. We have a 2,000 life group. They introduced it five years ago with 10 people that started. And five years later, they're now up to 300. So it's a process. You're welcome. Okay, thank you.
Okay, legislative presentation. Do you want to introduce it or do you want me to?
No.
Okay, okay. Sure, go ahead.
So just a level set on the legislative deck. In January of this year, we had a committee meeting of the whole where we did a mid-year review. What we wanted to do is, is we shared our legis, our initial legislative deck with the full board for comments. And this is all part of our, a new initiative on the legislative engagement, okay? The comments that we received as a board, we said that we, we could move forward and use that deck, however we wanted a financial overlay to the legislative deck. And it really parlay's into the discussions that we've had about the structural budget issues. So what, what we did was we moved the legislative deck to the finance and operations committee so that we could get the financial overlay. And that's what this particular deck is. So we, we have two things. We're going to have Mr. Bloom go through this, this deck just so that everyone has a level set of the messaging that we're looking for as we talk to legislators. So if you have any questions, you know, you can ask us what the two points that we want to look at. Actually, one, major one. I mean, if you have any questions, that's one. The second one is, are we comfortable with this deck? You know, to use it? When we talk to our legislators, and, and just so that everyone understands, what we did last time was we said this, you know, the, in January, that initial deck, we said even though we wanted the financial overlay, we said that that deck was okay to be using with our legislators just so that we can have something to begin those discussions. Because we do have legislators wanting to talk to us about education. So that's why we wanted to put this financial overlay in front of everyone so that everyone sees it, gets the messaging, and then, you know, we move forward with, are we okay with this deck until we have another one? Because this is going to be evolutionary process. So with that, Mr. Bloom?
All right, Karen had asked, and the finance committee had kind of talked about this. This has been circulated before, so hopefully this isn't new, unless you're new to the board. But as an opportunity, and we've talked about it, but haven't gotten a chance at the board table to really go through this. And I think this is a great opportunity for us to talk about it. We've had some meetings using this information. I think there've been positive meetings. And I would start with, and I think we start the meetings off with, this is our example, but it's an example of an average suburban school district. The mechanics of how we're funded and how our costs grow and how our, where our revenues come from are not that different from most of the other suburban districts around here. The issues that we face are similar to those as well. So with the legislators, we're not going to them with our hat in hand, asking them for something for us. But we're trying to educate them and become their partner in understanding how education works in the, basically the suburban school districts. So with that, let's see. Where's it, where's it receive?
It's over here on the left.
God. Mike, I'm Chris. Just kidding. Anyway, so, I don't know. Shannon, we want to skip through some of the word stuff. I'll probably stick to the numbers. I mean, our, our goal is to use us as an example to build relationships with the, with the legislators. I think we all know this slide pretty well as far as district at a glance, I think. One of the main points that we make here, though, is that, you know, we're, we're a unit district, early childhood through 12. But the other point is from, from an administrator standpoint, we ranked 281st out of 288 unit districts on administrative cost per student. So we are extremely lean on the administrative side. So that is, is one of the points that we want to make. And although the certified staff to student ratio is 12.9 to 1, that is an average. We have mandated programs with much lower numbers. And, you know, I know the parents out there are going to say, I'm sure that you're familiar with classes that are north of 30 to 1. So I don't want to, to make it look like we're, we're saying that we have a 13 to 1 ratio across, across the group. So I think we need to point that out, even though that statistics out there, that there is a variance around that. So what's important, I think, to communicate to the legislators is, it's kind of how we're funded. I mean, the suburban districts are funded primarily through local property taxes. So if you look at District 205, our local sources are 89% of our revenue. State, state provides 7% of our revenue. And then federal's the other three. Comparing to a state average of 63.3%. So you can see that we are funding a lot more of the education in our suburban districts than the state average. And as far as the pension debate goes, there's this argument about this free lunch that we are getting with respect to the pensions. And I, we thought it was important to put Chicago Public Schools up there and that the state picks up 34.4% of their educational tab despite them funding the pensions locally. And again, if you guys have questions, and it's just to stop as we go through this or, you know, as, as you're there. So where does the local, the local revenues are driven by basically inflation and new construction? From an inflation standpoint, we have the property tax cap, which caps the baseline revenue. You take last year's revenue and you multiply it by CPI. And CPI has averaged 1.8% over the last five years and 2.5% over the last 18 years. Now, what you add to that is new construction. And that, and that's how you get growth above CPI within, within the revenue. And as you can see in the chart, you know, we experienced the bubble like everyone else did. And, you know, at its peak, the new construction was approaching $80 million a year in Elmhurst. That, as you can see, precipitously dropped and it is back close to long-term trend. If you take the bubble years out, it is 21 million. The average over the last 15 years is 21.4 million. So the point being that those were great days, but they're not coming back anytime soon. And so we are at long-term trend as far as new construction growth goes. So when you look at our budget and our revenue rate of increase, CPI plus new growth now is about what long-term trend has been. I flipped too many pages here. On the cost side, and this is where the issue comes in with our budget. So the revenue is driven by inflation and property tax growth, economic factors. Our budget is driven largely by non-economic factors. You know, when you look at the different light items that we have, we, enrollment is a huge factor in, in staffing levels. And mandates are big factors in staffing levels. So those aren't necessarily tied to what our revenue is tied to. So you have this potential that the lines are different slopes and that your costs grow faster than your revenues can grow, which is what's happened over the past few years as we've had to make cuts. So as you look at the salaries line, you know, one of the things that we communicate to legislators is we, we have been managing our shop tightly. We've done our, we've done staff reductions. You know, the staff is sacrificed and tied compensation to CPI. We've had to cut 60 positions over the last three years. And, and so that's from a drivers, from a salary perspective, we've tried to hold those in line with the rate of growth of our revenues. Now, the benefit side of it, and, and you just, you just heard our, our benefits consultants talk about the HMO rate rises. And it's been no secret in the press that healthcare is growing at double digits. So again, we also absorb those costs. We also have a Cadillac tax that's estimated at $380,000 in 2018, growing to 3.4 million in 2023, absent any changes in our plan. So these are all things on the horizon that we know that are going to impact our budget that have no relation to the way our revenue grows. Other items, tuition dues and fees. That's primarily outplaced tuition, which is projected to grow at 10% a year. I think, you know, Meg's done a great job of, of trying to in-source and use resources here to, to serve those populations. But even despite that, I think we're doing that and still seeing 10% increases in the, in the outsourced fees. It ranges from $30,000 to $80,000 per student that we outplace. And so again, that's not something that's tied to what our revenue is tied to. And then within the capital side of it, and again, we're looking at operating funds. So traditionally, districts have thought about capitalist bricks and mortar, and that comes out of a separate fund as far as additions to schools and upgrades and things like that, non-maintenance-related things. Capital in the 21st century or infrastructure is technology, but that's, comes out of our operating fund. So as we try to maintain our technology spend in our, in our infrastructure here, you're talking about 2.75 million a year. I think Dave, Dave did a great job of kind of explaining what we're trying to do with that. But that's to keep, maintain our system and our bandwidth just to keep up is 2.75 million a year. So again, another item that's not tied to the revenue side of what it is. So again, this is trying to explain the structural, you know, situation of our budget and helping, helping the folks downstate to understand what is driving our budget. The next slide was to give a sense of, you know, where our enrollment's coming from. I mean, what are things within enrollment that are driving cost? And there are resource-intensive subgroups that are growing faster than the overall enrollment. Our early childhood programs are growing faster. Our ELL programs are growing faster. Our percent low income. Students that have needs that take resources from us are growing faster than the average, you know, the total average enrollment within the district. So those are things, and a lot of those, those subgroups are mandated groups. So these are things that the state controls in some respects, the, the amount of service that we provide. Student services, we talked through them about, we, we employ 342 people within student services. And again, we're proud of this. I mean, I think we do a great job with our kids, but it's not cheap. And I think they need to understand that we, as a community, value this and we're investing in it because we're picking up 87% of the, of the cost of this. The other piece is too, there was an argument made that, you know, that we're getting a free lunch on the pension and we should, we should absorb that pension cost because we make those decisions, which I beg to differ with. But the state makes the decisions on a lot of mandates, but as you can see, the state funds 63% of the decisions they make. So there is a question as to whether if they fully funded the decisions they made and we fully funded the decisions we made, we'd end up making out ahead. So anyway, that's a point too, that their mandates aren't free. So the crux of this comes to, to this slide, which is really what, what are the options that we have financially to, to address costs? And so you can increase revenue, which requires a referendum, which may or may not pass. That's not up to the board, that's up to the public. You can increase staff contribution, which requires contract negotiations, which is, you know, up to mutual agreement with the staff. And those aren't unilateral and we can't, we can't pass those through unilaterally. And that could create, you know, issues and labor unrest and strike and whatnot. And those are, those are not all good scenarios for us. Or we can lay off staff and eliminate discretionary programs. This is, and we can only do that within the non-mandated, by the way. So this is the only option that we control. So if the state were to pass along additional cost to us and we were to go to referendum in that field and we went and asked our staff and they said no, the only option we have as a board is to cut programs and staff. And so the legislature needs to know and understand that when they pass a new unfunded mandate and they send the bill to us, that this last box is one of the only things that we have that we can do we have that we can do in short order to react to some of the legislation that's coming up. So I think it's important, again, structurally, to say, it's not, this isn't a values judgment saying that, you know, we want to lay off staff, or we want to, you know, renegotiate contracts, or we want to go to a referendum. This is just, this is the math problem. You can either increase revenue, pass through cost, or you can cut costs through layoffs and program reductions. And the legislators need to know that there are consequences to the votes that they take. So again, the last 2 slides you've seen, I mean, we communicate to them that, number 1, we've made the hard choices. You know, our staff has sacrificed, we've sacrificed, our kids and our parents have sacrificed as it pertains to programs, class sizes, and things like that, we get it. And so, you know, to kind of refute the argument that maybe we've not been watching the shop close enough and that, you know, I think I've heard the argument that school boards are lax in their financial management. I think that we've done a great job in our district at being very disciplined in how we do this. And we want to communicate to the legislators that we've done our part to keep costs in check. And then in summary, again, this is just a summation of the different parts of the slides. But when we get to them is, I mean, the point that we get to them, recent pending legislation could add significant costs. So, you know, something good like, you know, the performance review, Senate Bill 7, you know, it is, but it is creating a huge administrative burden. These aren't, I mean, these aren't cheap and these aren't easy to do. And so even good things cost money. And those didn't come with funds attached to them. And we're in our budget dealing with that. The pension shift could be very detrimental to us. Every 1% shift is about 500,000 of additional expense. And the big point there is, is based on our average of our BA1 teachers on our scale, that would cost us 10 teachers for every 1% within our budget. So again, if we go back to that box where you can raise revenue, you can pass through costs, if the public, you know, if we don't get a referendum through, if the staff and the union contract decides not to absorb the increased pension cost, our only option is to eliminate programs and staff. And the magnitude of that is 10 teachers for every 1%. And I think the legislator, again, needs to understand what could happen based on what they might do. There was a bill in, there was a bill up that I think, I don't know, Karen, if it's, one of them died and the other one is kind of tabled.
They both died.
Okay, so I won't touch on that piece. But, you know, again, the other piece of it too is the state, on an annual basis, at the end of our fiscal year, when you look at it, the state typically ends up owing us somewhere around $2.5 million of payments that they're late on making to us. And that's at a proration of general state aid. They have not fully funded education. So they're, based on a fully funded state aid formula, we would have $350,000 more annually, but they prorate it. So again, these would be nice to have, but we're going to the legislators saying, look, you know, it would be nice if you paid up what you owed us. It would be nice if you didn't prorate general state aid to us. But we're not asking for that. We're asking that you stop making it worse. Please understand that when you keep handing mandates to us, there are implications to what that is. So we are trying very hard to address, you know, the challenges that we face in education with the local property taxpayer. And you keep putting more on that property taxpayer's back. And so I think that, and Karen, we had a slide that we talked about that's not in here that I think we would propose to add, which is just a message at the end. And if you have, there were 3 points, and they escaped me right now.
That's okay. And the 3 points, really, just to summarize what we had said from our January meeting as a board, we wanted 3 key messages to our legislators. One is fully fund education, 2, relief for unfunded mandates, and lastly, pension reform, just because of the implications.
So I guess at the end of the day, this is one piece of a communication effort. I mean, we're talking to legislators, we have to talk to parents. I mean, as the new board members know, I mean, we've asked Dave to restructure the district for long-term sustainability. These are pieces of the message. This is all part of the effort. So this is one angle to it. We would hope that these slides would be something useful in other conversations. We will add to these things and we will continue to evolve it. So we're open, I mean, open to contributions, ideas, questions, whatnot.
At the end, I just have something to add.
Well, I would just open it to questions or comments or approval.
First off, I want to say thank you, and I can say that objectively, since I was not a part of the group that was putting this together. I think this is an excellent presentation, and it's great information, it's great education for our legislators. What I'm wondering, is there a way that we can involve the community? Is there a way that we can have communities send out information similar to our points? So, you know, what steps, additional steps can we take?
That's the other half of...
Yeah, the board is already working on a community presentation that parallels this. There's a little different significance, but really parallels this presentation. So John McDonough and board members are working on that, and that'll be rolling out to the board soon, so.
Just so that you understand, the legislative plan, draft plan that we put together as a board previous to April 30th, was that we needed to understand it ourselves, right, as an administration, as a board. And so, and we were being tapped to engage with our legislators. So we said, let's get something out, especially during the session. So that was one phase of it. The other piece is definitely, how do we engage the community? I do know that there are other boards that are looking to do the same, just because of the state of education, the state of, to Mr. Bloom's point, we are not alone in this issue. So it's like the next phase, if you will.
Any other questions? Mr. McDonough?
What we did was we put together something, and it paints in a lot more broader brush, different audience, a more general public audience, and so it stays a little more general. We worked on it in what was the Board Improvement Policy Committee, now reconstituted as the Board Improvement Committee, which is the officers and the policy committee. And I think the Board Improvement Committee is keeping this. And what I suggested, and I suggested it in individual conversations now, is that I take the staff comments to that, assemble that, and then hand it off to the new Board Improvement Committee for consideration before it comes back to the, and I think that makes sense, but I don't know how, you know, people want to do it.
I don't want to get too far off track. This is the community presentation.
I know.
Yeah.
But the, getting back here, getting back to this presentation, the 3 things, I looked over your shoulder and I saw the 3 items you had. A great communications professional once said to me, "Don't go out there unless you have a call to action." And she's sitting over there, by the way. And she is 100% right on this. And what I, there's a lot of information here, but some of it, some of the information is, you know, contingent. The Cadillac tax are things we can work around, freezing the levy of the EAV, well, that went down. Some of those things would, I think, be better removed. And to go over this thing with this filter of these 3 points, very simple points, fully fund education, relief for the unfunded mandates, and pension reform. I'm going to your slide 10, and I'm wondering if there's a way to integrate those 3 points into what you have in, actually, it wasn't slide 10, I'm sorry, it would be your summary slide.
This is the one that's up there?
Your summary slide. I think your summary slide, what's that?
It's our slide.
You told me it was words, so it's just words. No, but our summary slide, I think, needs to simplify, not necessarily to this level, but there's a lot of extra information in there.
And I think the, Karen had made the point when she brought that up, that there'd be, at a minimum, there'd be another slide right behind this, which is that slide and only those 3 points. This one, I think, in our experience, we didn't go over much of it. This is basically the story that we told in the previous slides, just in case you haven't hit it. Or if you're handing it to them and they take it to explain it to somebody else, they can look at this to refresh themselves. Those points have all been made before. Your point's exactly valid. We need to then summarize that with that last piece, which just says, these are the 3 things that you need to remember. So I think that's a good point.
It's an excellent piece. I appreciate your sprucing it up and tightening it up between the 2 of you. It just really, it's a good job.
Mrs. Bestido.
So I'm just trying to understand, so Karen, you're the legislative contact person. So you would be inviting someone to come and sit down and listen to this on a one-on-one basis? Would you be talking to a small crowd? How would, what would the scenario be that you would be giving this presentation?
Just as a background, the Board Improvement and Policy Committee, as we have different agenda items, we kind of coalesce it, like, you know, John is working with the community presentation deck like this. So the legislative piece, you know, we just put together, we said we, as a board, wanted to do legislative engagement, right? And so the best way that we found out is to put a draft together, people shoot holes at it, so anyway. So I kind of spearheaded it, but it's the full board that's doing legislative engagement. You know, so for example, the administration, Mr. Prunow, and sometimes Mr. Welton goes to the meetings with legislators as we can get on their agenda. And we just kicked this off this year. You know, Ms. Ebner and Mr. McDonough will be attending a future meeting. Mr. Bloom has attended a meeting. So we, as a board, will build relationships with our legislators. Does that answer your question, though?
Well, we've met them one-on-one in their offices, you know, just scheduled with their assistants and meet with them and deliver the message.
Deliver this, this slideshow?
Right, right. And so my next question is, you know, we've met with most of the legislators. And number 1, when I met with Representative Willis, how do we incorporate the feedback that we're getting from the legislators, you know, to improve this, you know, bring it back, review it, and keep making this better and better? Because we did get some comments from the representative. So as you said, it's a process, so we need to be able to get input and keep modifying.
So I would think that we do it the same way we do everything else, is that we bring it to the committees who are, I'm going to call it sponsoring it, or, you know, making sure that this, everything moves forward. And then we make the changes, you know, recommended to the full board.
I guess, I mean, this is a subset of a broader set of slides that I think we view as kind of a library. When you're going to talk to whatever your constituent group is, you pull out the ones you think work and you can make a deck, and we've all kind of agreed and seen and are comfortable with. So this would be part of, and in conjunction with some of the work that I think John has spearheaded, that that should all live in, I think, the same place. The question is, who, who's kind of curator of the, you know, the repository of slides? And this should go in it, and it should be, you know, where does that live?
McDonough?
I guess I'm less concerned with that, with getting the feedback on the substance that we're hearing from the legislators. I mean, the goal in this is to have them become advocates for our school district. And I think that's something that should come back, be described, you know, we should hear about those meetings and their concerns. And I don't know what the best way to do that is. I have no problem saying the deck and all its improvements, you know, go to the Board Improvement Committee and, or the 2 decks and that messaging function. Maybe I'm, you know, trusting too much in, you know, delegating too much, or advocating too much delegation. But I'm comfortable with the document resting there, but I think we should all be engaged here at this table in the dialogue and the substance.
Mrs. Harrell?
So maybe this gets back to the point of the call to action. When I asked the question about the community engagement, I was thinking more of how can the community assist the board instead of having 7 people do this presentation or tell the legislators that we want this? How can we have the community, which obviously includes our staff, participate and also send a message out to say, this is something that we need you legislators to pay attention to? So that's, I'm wondering, how does that fit into the process?
Do you want to go? Okay, so you're right, we need feedback from all constituents. But I think what we're talking about tonight is just a small subset. We wanted to, while the legislators were in session this spring, we wanted to meet with them. So we put something together and wanted to meet before the summer break. So this is a smaller subset. But what you're talking about, yes, I agree, it's a larger discussion. And I don't want to get too far off track tonight, because this is for legislative, but I agree with what you're saying. We need, that's, those are our next steps.
Just a word of caution. The Board of Education, I think, has to be careful that you don't cross the line of advocacy because you represent all the constituents in Elmhurst. And not all the constituency may agree when you go out and, you know, kind of rally the troops around some issues because you represent the whole community. So I think you just have to be careful and sensitive to that, that you have a different role here as board members. You represent everyone in the community, not everyone is going to agree with the take on this presentation, for example, from the Board of Education doing that. I think, I think what you have to be careful is, now you're starting to use your influence and you certainly can't use district resources in order to put together an influential package or have people call legislators and you're promoting that. I think another group has to do that instead of the Board of Education. And that's a community group, a PTA group, or someone else like that. But I think you just, just a word of caution for the board.
Does anyone have anything else? Mr. Bloom?
I guess at the end of the day, we tried to put together something that was mechanical and fact-based, that tried not to cross that line when you went through the structure of our budget. And maybe it's that call to action piece that gets us in trouble at the end. And so, you know, I think from a numbers standpoint, we're just trying to put out there, okay, here's what drives revenue line, here's what drives the cost line, you guys can see where they cross, you can see what, you know, what the decision paths are, but we're going to leave it at that. But you need to understand that your actions have implications for us, not advocating one thing or the other. We're just telling you this is what happens. And so I think, and thank you, I mean, we need to make sure that we stay on the correct side of that line.
Well, so I want to wrap it up. Are we, as a board, okay with using this legislative deck as we move forward with future meetings until we have another one?
Okay, let's move on. This is your 14th budget.
In, I just want to take a little time just to go over the 2012 tax extension EAVs and rates, which came out in April. And so the district was informed of the extension EAV and rates in April. And I think recently, the tax bills went out to the community. So I just want to talk briefly about the timeline. We had a tentative tax levy in November, final tax levy in December that was filed with the county prior to the last Tuesday in December. And then recently, the final EAV and rates came out, and then the first tax bills went out. We start getting our first tax collections in June, and then the second round of tax collections happens in September. The property tax extension limitation law, that's also known as the tax cap, limits our tax extensions to the lesser of CPI or 5%. Tax extensions for the school district, that is the total amount of all, it's a sum total of all the tax bills that go out to District 205 taxpayers. So that tax extension is, the tax cap is on the tax extension itself. And the tax extension is our EAV, equalized assessed valuation, multiplied by the tax So it's the lesser of CPI or 5%. And there's an exception for new construction. So we also get the property taxes on new construction, which, and that is beyond the CPI limitation. This slide shows just the timing. So this tax levy, which went out in December, was based on the 3% CPI that came out the prior January. So that was in January 2012. The one that came out recently, January of 2013, the 1.7%, will impact next year's levy. And so this one, because the monies come in in June and September, we associate that with budget year 1314. The levy, next year's levy, the 1.7%, we associate that with budget year 201415. The CPI has averaged 2.42 over the past 10 years and 1.8%. The CPI has averaged 2.42 over the past 10 years and 1.8% over the last five years. This slide shows the inverse relationship between EAV and tax rate. So like I said, the tax extension is the tax rate multiplied by the EAV. So when, and this next slide kind of shows that this, this relationship where, when EAV is going up, tax rates are going down. And when EAV is going down, tax rates are going up. You can see there where it talks about tax year 2012, it shows the tax rate at 4.8018, which is a 16.39% increase over last year's tax rate of 4.1257. That doesn't mean the school district got 16.39% more in taxes, we didn't. Our tax extension increased by 4%, but the tax rate went up by 16%. And so I just wanted to clear that up a little bit. And you could see there that our total EAV went down from two, so it went down 10.6% this year from last year's EAV. Another thing that I wanted to point out, well, I'll just, I'll just keep going. This slide just talks about our general financial condition. We've covered it a little, we've covered it early, 84% property taxes. So we have very flat revenues. Expenditures are increasing faster than revenues. We've mitigated that deficit by doing budget reductions three years in a row. Expenditures are increasing due to enrollment increases, the need for technology, infrastructure, unfunded mandates. There's the potential shifting that hasn't been determined yet, but it's a concern going forward. And our fund balances at this time have been adequate, but we are concerned about the April-May period prior, which is our low cash flow period. May 31st is our cash flow low point. And we want to avoid having to do short-term borrowing and tax anticipation warrants. This shows our tax extension, which, as I said earlier, it increased 4.05% over last year's tax extension. The one thing that has been noticed in the tax bills is, on the tax bills, it calls something pension. But what that is, it's the IMRF levy and the Social Security levy. So if you add those two numbers together there, that, those two tax rates, it comes to 16.1656. Those, that's where that pension number on the tax bills is. That has nothing to do with the teacher retirement system. So the TRS has nothing to do with the amount that says pension on the tax bill. I just wanted to make sure we straightened that out. It's the IMRF and Social Security is what is on the tax bill that says pension. And the reason that that particular line or that tax rate went up is our IMRF fund is one of our lowest fund balance funds. In fact, it was, it was negative, and from a cash flow standpoint, negative in April and May. In addition, IMRF employer rates have been going up, like, five years in a row. We've seen significant increases in IMRF employer rates. So that resulted in an increase in the tax levy for the IMRF and Social Security. So that, the pension line does look like it's increasing on the tax bills, but that has nothing to do with the teacher retirement system. That's really all I had, I just wanted to clear up a few things. But like I said, the tax extension, which is all the bills, a sum total of all of the tax bills that went out to District 205 taxpayers, increased for the school district 4.05%. Now, there could be a shift that goes on between taxpayers. And I do believe that that happened this year because I said that the total EAV went down 10.6%. But the commercial EAV went down 25.14%. So there is a shift that has occurred because the EAV has gone down more on the commercial taxpayers than it did on the residential. Residential EAV went down 8.56%. So that's really all I had.
That drop in commercial EAV is stunning. Because I thought most, almost appraisals, reading recently, are showing. Does that include the hospital? Is that the main driver? And if you take that out of there, where is the commercial EAV?
I do believe it's the hospital that was put in and then taken out. That is probably the biggest component of the reduction in the commercial.
But isn't that something that, I mean, it should, we knew, I mean, you should be able to pick it out because we knew what it was when we were looking at the refund. Is it still significant disparity when you correct for the hospital?
The hospital is not in the 2012 EAV. It was in there in 2011. And so that probably has resulted in a tax shift. Did you, what?
I think John's asking, do you know what the percentage difference is? If you accounted for the hospital, did commercial property continue to go down in spite of the hospital? And do we know what that figure is? I don't know if you have that.
I haven't really called the county to find out exactly what that is.
Mr. Bloom?
So Chris, 2 million for the hospital, was that the levy last year? I mean, the refund, our refund was the...
We are expecting a $3 million refund, almost 3 million.
For three, for...
Over three years.
Three years. But the annual that we were looking at was, the hospital was like $2 million worth of revenue to us, which is now spread over the remaining tax base?
I think it was about 1.6 or so.
Okay, yeah, maybe a little bit less than that. So, I mean, you took 1.6 and spread it over the EAV. And you're talking about a budget here, or a levy of 100 million. So it's 1.6% of the levy ended up getting absorbed by everybody else. And I'm sure there's an algebra problem that one of these students here could probably do, but I can't as I'm sitting here, but we could, we could figure that out.
Just for the public too, we keep calling it a refund. We are refunding taxes back to the hospital, just so the public's clear. I don't want the public to think we're getting the refund, it's going the other way.
Mr. McDonough?
The reason I ask is because all the things that I've read showed that residential real estate is recovering more slowly than commercial. And commercial has rebounded rather significantly, you know, perhaps to 2007 levels at this point in a lot of places. And it would be surprising if in Elmhurst it wasn't. And that's why I was asking, so.
Just remember though, there's not a lot of commercial property in Elmhurst. We're driven a lot by residential. So I'm guessing that if you pull the hospital out, it's going to have a big percentage impact on commercial property. Because there's just not that much in Elmhurst. I did not go there. We will be posting this on our website. So if you get questions from the public, you can refer them to this presentation.
Okay, Superintendent's Agenda, the Consent Agenda. Would anyone like to remove an item from the Consent Agenda? Okay, hearing none. I need a motion to approve items A through D.
Quick question, were we going to thank people for their donations, or, when would that happen? Now?
I don't know, does it happen before the vote?
No, maybe it's late.
Yes?
After the motion, before the vote? Okay.
Thanks.
I move that the Board of Education approve the Superintendent's Consent Agenda, items A through D.
Second?
Thank you for going to do that. We have two donations tonight, both from York High School. Would any board member like to talk about these specific donations to thank? Did you want to do that?
I can do the Braid one.
You asked about it.
My daughter was, right, my daughter was part of Braid, and I'm very familiar with them. And very much thank you to the Elmhurst Eagles and Jim Reprecht for their generous donations to J. Kyle Braid. It's a fantastic program to help mentor young leaders. And just thank you, thank you very much.
The other donation is for York High School Automotive Technology and Collision Repair Program. So parts were donated, which are very much appreciated for those students that are part of that program.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent, Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Superintendent's Agenda action items, there are two action items. Mr. Purnell?
Yes, Chris will walk you through. The first one is the resolution for transfer of money from the Education Operations to Maintenance Funds.
This is just a standard resolution that we do every year. And the auditors require it. You could see in the resolution, it talks about the Illinois Program Accounting Manual, where it talks about this, where we are transferring money from the Educational and Operation and Maintenance Fund to the Debt Service Fund in order to pay for technology and copier leases and for some debt certificates that we have.
Are there any questions? Okay, with that, we need a roll call vote. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution to transfer money from the Education and Operations and Maintenance Funds to the Debt Service Fund for the purpose of payment of technology leases and debt certificates for fiscal year 2013.
Is there a second? Thank you.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent, Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, one absent, next item.
Yes, we are a member, as you know, of the School Association for Special Education in DuPage County. And as such, they ask us to designate a board member as the representative from the Elmhurst Board. And they ask that you do that through a formal board action. So tonight, the Board of Education is being asked to appoint Mr. John McDonough to serve as the representative, and the Superintendent to serve as the alternate representative to the School Association of Special Education in DuPage County for the 2013-14 school year.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Stufen?
Yes, I was honored to be our representative this past year. And I learned a lot about what our organization does. And, you know, with the SACID organization does for our students in student services. And worked with Ms. Schnorr, who does a wonderful job working not only with our students in our district, but a liaison to SACID, so.
Is there a motion? Mrs. Stufen?
I move that the Board of Education appoint Mr. John McDonough to serve as its representative, and Mr. Dave Purnell, Superintendent, to serve as alternate representative to the School Association for Special Education in DuPage County SACID Board for the 2013-2014 school year.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we need a roll call vote.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent, Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. It's six eyes, no nays, one absent.
Okay, we have upcoming meetings. On Thursday, the Finance Committee meeting will meet at 6:30. Next Tuesday, we have a Special Board of Education meeting. We'll be reviewing the Superintendent's Evaluation, Mr. Purnell's Annual Evaluation. And then May 29th, we have our next regular Board of Education meeting. Is there one more?
Can we just clarify that the Tuesday, May 21st, Special Board of Education meeting is a closed session?
Okay, there are two actions from closed session items. The first one is student discipline. And I need a motion for student discipline.
I move that the Board of Education uphold the administrative recommendation of the one-day suspension for student H.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mrs. Stufen? Mrs. Walsh, we need a roll call vote.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent, Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. That is six eyes, no nays, one absent. The next item from closed session was employment of employee. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Stufen?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the administrative recommendation to terminate Marie Thielen House effective May 14th, 2013.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McDonough? Mrs. Walsh, we need a roll call vote again?
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent, Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. It's six eyes, no nays, one absent. Agenda is Board Communications. Are there any updates from board members? Mrs. Stufen?
I know that we all were invited as participants of the LEND organization, the Legislative Education Network of DuPage County, to go to Springfield on May 8th. I know that they have traditionally in the past had lobby days, although they haven't for several years now. And I don't think any of us have participated before. But since I'm the LEND representative, I went on behalf of District 205. We met, of course, our pre-planned agenda did not go as planned. But there were five districts that were represented that are part of LEND, as well as the LEND organization. And we were able to meet with some of our senators and representatives. So Senator Cullerton, Senator Dillard, Representatives, bear with me, Conroy. And then actually, we met with other House Representatives. we met with other House Representatives and Senators that we were able to get into the, that they were available, and we were able to meet with them. And some of them are on the education committees, and, and so, that's why it's important, you know, for us, not just to meet with our legislator, legislators, but all the legislators that are impacting education. So, we met with Representative Pam Roth, and then, we actually met with Senator Mike Connolly, and then, Senator Katusky, who is actually the chairman of the Senate Appropriations Committee. So, he's, he appropriates, or, you know, really takes care of the budget. So, it was really interesting to be there. I would highly recommend, you know, in future opportunities, that we can participate to understand how our legislators, how legislation works for us in, in Illinois, and as well as advocates of education. So, of course, you know, we talked a lot about, similar to the legislative deck that, that we presented here, all of the districts are feeling, you know, a similar budget structural issue. I understand that, you know, Chicago is different than the suburban schools, different than So, there's some nuance, you know, issues, but for the most part, you know, everyone does understand the impact of the economics of a lot of legislation that costs money, that is not necessarily funded. And so, that was really our message, you know, it was our, you know, just like the three key messages that we said at the end of our legislative deck is what we were advocating for, you know. So, for example, on the pension reform, you know, everyone understands that there's a bill that, you know, was both at the Senate and the House was passed, and they're on opposite chambers, that there more than likely will be a cost shift to local districts, whether we like it or not, whether we think it's reality or not, it will happen. And so, we really advocated for, you know, how are we going to have another financial impact to us, when the appropriations are not funding education as promised, as, as they have in previous years? So, what we really advocated for is, is at least not a reduction in our appropriations for the upcoming year. We did get some optimistic views about that, and so, I hope it's optimistic, but we can't count on it. So, you know, I really think that after spending, you know, the day in Springfield, you know, we really are advocating for education within our district, and, you know, juggling all the balls that we have to, and really understanding, how do we do as much as we can, right, and we're always asked to do more, with the ever-decreasing revenue source, and we understand how our taxpayers feel as well, and then, with the expenses that are increased. But, it was good to know, and I think that it's important for, you know, all of us to know, when we're, when you're not involved with, working with legislators or other boards, that we do have this similar message. We are taking similar actions to other boards, and I think the more that, that we can communicate our message, and the more that we can listen to what the other perspectives are, the better we're going to be able to represent and be good stewards of education. I know that it was kind of broad statements, but I think that, you know, for the, you know, first, the first, you know, lobby day that we were part of, that's kind of the overall tone, you know, that was communicated to the legislators and the legislators to us, is you, you do have to talk to, they want to hear from us, you know, they want to hear from, you know, parents, their constituents, and, and so, I think that we're on the right track by initiating our legislative engagement. Any questions?
Is there anything else for board communications? Okay, hearing none, I declare the meeting adjourned.